...who's getting our clicker over here, so she'll join us in just a minute. Oh, you've got that. And as Mr. McElveen said, this is a presentation that is for discussion. And then it is for the Chair of the Board of Supervisors and the Chair of the School Board to make plans for the next step. And they have had a conversation about this and are looking to have a facilitated dialogue to have someone work with the two groups together. This presentation was brought to Skip, to the team, to discuss the ideas as a starting point. But it's important to notice that Skip stands for Successful Child and Youth Policy Team. And so Skip is a place for a dialogue and the places where things overlap, where we both are focused on children in our youth, on our students. But this is much broader than just a Skip team. So today, we're really going to be talking about the kind of holistic overarching conversation on achieving equity. And some of these things are specific to the schools and some are specific to the county. But because we are both entities that have a lot of focus jointly on youth, it was, the discussion was brought to the Skip team, as well as there is ongoing work that you will hear about in the presentation that have already been started between the county, the juvenile justice system, and our various resources. This work was actually in Holland, Michigan. It was started, that's just west of Grand Rapids, because the CEO of a major Fortune 500 company brought to the mayor that they would need to be moving if something could not be done to ensure that the workforce represented the whole population of that city. And so this has to do with human resources, economic developing, zoning, so many things besides just the school system. So today, we will hear about the work that's been going on across our county and schools, but we'll also be hearing about the work as an overarching desire to achieve more equity in our, in our system. And again, our goals, to receive the information, to discuss the information, and then our chairs respectively will make a plan for the future work. So with that, I'm going to give Mary Ann my chair and turn this over to Mary Ann, Karen, and Marla. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Good afternoon, and we really genuinely appreciate your time and this opportunity to be with you today. This presentation and discussion that we're going to have with you really is a reflection of the leadership work that the Skip team members have brought forward to date around the issues of equity. And I know that you guys, last time in your, in your earlier meeting about the Skip team, members of your group that are representatives on the Skip are Janie Strauss, Pat Hines, and also Megan McLaughlin. We did come back in October before our full, full Board of Supervisors during one of their committee sessions in, with the Human Services Committee, which is a committee of the whole of the board, and we shared this presentation with them. The board members that are part of the Skip, just for your reminder, are Supervisors McKay So the, the other thing that, what we're going to really do is really help you to, help to kind of walk through, knowing that this is not a new issue for Fairfax County and a not, not a new challenge that we've been working to address, but really talk about the journey that we've had so far. And also take a look at, knowing full well, and again, kind of to reiterate what Kim had mentioned, this is bigger than education, it's bigger than human services, really crosses all sectors of the government and the community. We're really presenting to you, and really brought this before the School Board, because we know that government institutions have power and influence to define policy and really to examine some unintended consequences of policy. And, you know, back in October, it just so happened that the very same day that we were talking with board members, they had heard a presentation from the Commonwealth Institute called Bursting the Bubble, and I think that you guys had a link to it on your board posting. But anyway, this really addresses the challenges of living and working in the national capital region. And I raised this back again today because it's an important context. Equity really has an economic impact. That's the bottom line. It's more than just the right thing to do, right? There's, there's an economic impact, and we need to talk about that. And this study in itself, really, the two key findings in the study are, working in this metro region has its advantages, for sure. However, prosperity is not broadly shared in our community. And income inequality is on the rise. So during this presentation, again, we're going to reflect on the fact that Fairfax has for decades launched initiatives to address disparities that do follow long racial/ethnic lines in indicators of well-being, from education to health to juvenile justice to poverty, and the list goes on. Fairfax is not unique as a locality in the United States because others are also challenged. We will share some strategic lessons learned from other jurisdictions who are doing more intentional racial equity work and who understand that right now is the time that we need to interrupt the status quo in a very positive way. We certainly know, looking at the media every single day, that the, the desire on the part of the community to interrupt the status quo is really quite evident, and so it's a very good time for action. However, advancing opportunities and achieving equity really does require intentional collective leadership action. So the milestones, and forgive me, I've, I've had a little bit of, I had like no voice on Saturday. So much better. I'm not going to go through this slide in a diligent, you know, in, in a detailed way, but really back, starting back at, I picked the 1990s as a starting place to really look at some of the intentional strategies in your system. And these things exist, many of them still exist even today. The Minority Student Oversight, Minority Student Achievement Oversight Committee was a formal group that was brought into place. You know, the Chantilly Pyramid Minority Student Achievement Committee. So there's been lots of initiatives, good initiatives, that have come. And as we've kind of reflect back along the progression, what we see is they're more siloed kind of initiatives. And the focus of them, really focus on the individual, providing that individual or that family some supports, kind of fixing the people. Yet Fairfax in our systems, and we look at our data today, unfortunately, we still have gaps. So the solutions that we've tried to date have not achieved where we wanted to go. So we say it's time to shift gears, and a more effective approach is to address the fragmentation and to dig deeper into, to get to the unintended consequences of some of the practices and some of the policies that exist. The Children and Youth, the Skip team, or Successful Children and Youth Policy Team, is a good example of a structure that was literally put into place to address that fragmentation of institutions and systems. And so it's through that leadership work that we, again, are bringing this work forward. And it's beyond children, it's all ages. This, again, just kind of to build the context, just a reminder that both boards' leadership around equity is really evident. The School Board, for example, just launched a virgin, version 2.0 of closing the minority achievement gap. What you see up here is some budget guidance language that the Board of Supervisors adopted in the last year's budget cycle process, that really spoke to both disproportionality as well as Successful Children and Youth, as well as the, the policy team that's in place.
So now we're going to transition a little more, and get a little more specific in, in terms of our discussion today. And to ask this question, why a race equity lens? And one of the reasons why we have chose this is to, a lot of our work is focused on outcomes. What are the outcomes of our policies? What are the outcomes of our efforts? And one of the things that we looked is that racism in the United States has left us with a lot of inequities. And inequities in all of our institutions, whether it's in health, whether it's in juvenile justice, whether it's in education, whether it's in housing, employment. And it, and even though legalized discrimination has been ended, has been ended for decades in this country, and it's not without any efforts that we have tried to address some of those issues, but however, the outcomes have still plagued us. And so the thought is that opportunity structures are a web of influences that go beyond individual control. And so even though we've successfully addressed a lot of individual issues, we have to be mindful and look back at some of the organizational, institutional practices that may have left, like I said, unintended consequences that Karen was already speaking of. I think one also is that continuous outcomes, gaps that we've seen, those ones that's previously mentioned, as well as in health, education, poverty rates, they cannot be explained away. And so the thought is, how do we take a look at that and how do we address that? And it's not until we really take a look at what we call institutional structural racism that we can kind of say, okay, let's not deal with the personal, let's deal with the policy and really take a look at that. And the best way that we can kind of think about that is when we think about outcomes in terms of women, and look at the, the outcomes that were, that were, where women were disproportionate in some of the outcomes in relation to employment as well as other things. It's not until we put some place, some policy in place that caused us to look at things and, and from an equitable standpoint, that we see more movement in that area. Same thing when it came to disabled individuals, that we have to put some things in place that consciously make us say, what are those factors there that we're not necessarily thinking about upfront in our policy design or in our policies that actually moves the needles for these populations? And so it's that type of effort that we said, okay, we have to take a look at it from a racial lens and have that type of awareness upfront, because far too long, the outcomes have remained the same. And this here is, and I'm just going to just kind of point this out to you briefly, because we can spend our entire time just talking about this visual. But what this visual is, is just wants you to pay your attention is to the difference between equality and equity. Whereas equality is one that refers to, that refers to quantity, and as where as equity refers to actual outcomes. So in this situation, what you look at is, is three youth that were wanting to see a ballgame. And in this, and in this depiction, you have what they said on the, on the left, who is, their viewpoint of the game is based in equality. But if you look at it, equal doesn't necessarily have the desired outcome. And whereas on the right, when we're talking about equality, the desired outcome is for all youth to see the game. And so when we think about our policies and the outcomes of our policies, are we, are we focused on equality or are we focused on equity? And so when we talked about racial equity, I think one of the things that we have been working or striving towards is come to identify a, a standard definition that here in, in our region, that we can identify and kind of get behind, but also communicates our purpose and our attentions. And so this is the one, our latest one that we've kind of arrived, and I think this is really where we're going to have our definition remain. Where we define racial equity as the development of policies and practices and strategic investments to reverse racial disparity trends, eliminate institutional racism, and ensure that outcomes and opportunities for all people are no longer predictable by race.
So this, sorry. So this slide really, just in a high-level way, shows you some of the recent local progress, the more local parts of the journey. Starting with the Skip leadership work, they began this conversation in February earlier this year, and it took some conversation as well as some subgroup work. It just doesn't happen in the, you know, the, the hour that we're going to spend with you today to really kind of say, well, what are we really talking about here? And what does this really mean? And how is it really manifesting itself in our system? And how does it affect our community? And so it's that important leadership work that's critical to it. We actually, the Skip team had decided to convene the elected officials in their own subgroup, because it's hard sometimes to, to, they, they really felt like as policymakers or as part of policymaking bodies, because the Skip team isn't, it's in and of itself a policymaking board or a group. But they really felt like they needed some more time in a smaller setting in committee. And so that was kind of a facilitated conversation with some experts from the Haas Institute for a Fair and Inclusive Society, from the University of California, Berkeley, who came here to help have that, help facilitate that conversation and give some insights into, again, the work that other jurisdictions across the country have really embarked on to, to get some intentional progress related to racial equity. And, and the group, they have actually, the Haas Institute is helping to lead what is in a box lower, the, the Government Alliance for Race and Equity. And so we've had teams of staff that have attended and continued kind of the learning about what's been working, what's, what's a good option, and kind of considering what might work here in our community. So that's the leadership work. Certainly, the equity is a growth model. Right as we speak, currently, there is the development of a strategic plan for continued economic success in Fairfax County. That's not a separate effort, right? So when we think about equity as a growth model, it's through the work of this body or the Economic Advisory Commission is the one spearheading that effort, but that's not, again, a siloed effort. We've got to kind of work to integrate and to kind of be committed as a whole across all institutions and systems. And the other piece that we've learned is it isn't just government or school, you know, government, I think of schools as part of the government, right? So I think of the public institutions, it isn't just their job alone, there's inside and there's outside strategies. And so the community as a part of this conversation is absolutely essential. I mean, it is them that we're here serving. And just to give you what, what has been kind of done to date in terms of community engagement, and certainly lots more, you know, to do, but the nonprofit community has been interested in this, so there's been some conversation with some of their executive director team, the Faith Communities in Action Group, and we've gone back and had some further conversation with the Clergy Leadership Council around that. The Human Services Council's been interested in this issue, and just actually last week, Leadership Fairfax has reached out to say, is it time now for, how can Leadership Fairfax help to support a dialogue about race in our community? So we're going to kind of share the wealth here and let's talk about key lessons learned.
So Karen mentioned that a group of us were able to work with the Haas Institute, and in fact, some of us went to Minnesota and had an opportunity both to talk to people from around the country who were doing this kind of work, and then to see the cities of St. Paul and Minneapolis and St. Paul. Thank you. We were in Minneapolis. Minneapolis and St. Paul, they had a workshop that we were able to attend that was an all-day workshop, and they had people there from their HR department and from zoning and from, and it really gave us the breadth of how this work informs a lot of different pieces and gave us an opportunity to listen to a jurisdiction that was embedded in it and talking about it. So some of the key lessons learned, not just from them, but from people across the country, are these things that you see on the slide, and I'm going to only highlight a couple of them that have come up in conversation as we have done these presentations in different locations. One of them is the issue of race and poverty. Often, there is an overlaying of those two issues, but the data nationally, and certainly in some aspects at least, the data we see in Fairfax County is that regardless of economic level, you'll see differences in outcomes for different races. So it's not a one-to-one correspondence. And the other thing is that Dr. Powell, Dr. John Powell from the Haas Institute stresses that there may be a certain type of inequity that you're trying to work on, but you need strategies that approach all of the different impacts, all of the different things that lead to those outcomes. So you can't stay focused on poverty or race, you won't get to the solutions that you're looking for with either, so that you need to have sort of multi-layer things that, that have an impact. And then the other thing that Karen had already referred to is that aligning the efforts that are going on in the community with the efforts that are going on with our, our agencies and our, our work to be sure that we're getting direct feedback from the people who are engaged in those is an integral part. So it's not a matter of developing a policy and then holding a hearing and having people come and talk about the policy, it's more getting it from the beginning. What kinds of things are we maybe overlooking and not thinking about, but that the people in the community who are about to get, I don't know, a new metro stop or something, would have direct input into, well, you might not be thinking about, that's great, we love having a metro stop, but now I can no longer cross the street where I, and we're now going to have to go down, you know, those kinds of community inputs before the policy is ever developed. The other thing is that we have been, as a community, a community that has embraced diversity, that is something that we have said over and over again. This is moving sort of a step beyond that, as Karen said, to an economic growth model that doesn't just embrace diversity, but says we have to have one Fairfax and not multiple different Fairfax's, that we're working together to get all people in our community to have the opportunities that they need to succeed.
And, and just like Mary Ann was saying, I think that this, that the economic, the economic issues around inequity are definitely becoming more prevalent. Recently, Fed Chair Yellen really spoke to the issues of how inequities are really plaguing or slowing down the economic growth of jurisdictions, locality, as well as the entire country as a whole. And just like Dr. Dockery said in the beginning, one of the things that we learned in speaking to our colleagues around the country, and she spoke about our colleagues in Holland, Michigan, but also Google. Google had reached out to the Haas Institute, who we're working with there at Cal Berkeley, and really came to them to say, hey, we have an issue in regards to, not, not diversity, but also saying our workforce doesn't, doesn't, doesn't match what we need going forward, there's not enough inclusiveness. And I think to say, okay, how do we start looking at that and what, what are, what can we put into play to make sure that our workforce is prepared to match what the environment looks like and what the population looks like? So what you're starting to see, and just quickly share, some of the things that we discovered in regards to how your colleagues around the country are taking a look at this issue around race and, race equity. And so this first one here is from a leadership of King County, Washington, which is Seattle area. And then this one here is just a focus on government leadership, and this one speaks directly to their actual county executive there and how, and how they are attacking it to advance inequity. This next one speaks more of eliminating, eliminating race as a predictor through outcomes. This is also in Washington, this is more of a collective impact model. That's how they chose to address it there.
Can I just throw up, before you leave, the Thrive by Five example? They actually have coined the term, they stopped using the term achievement gap.
Yes.
And they said, they started to use the term opportunity gap. And they talked about it because they see that opportunity as the root cause of the disparities. And so it's not an achievement gap, it's really an opportunity gap. So I think that that's an important distinction to make.
Thank you, Karen. This next one, this slide comes out of Multnomah County, that's Portland, Oregon, and Greater Portland. And this is an example of an intentional policymaking tool to say, when you're creating policies, what are some of the things that, that one should take in consideration? And also the subsequent decision-making that comes out of that policymaking. And so this is that type of tool there. This here is an example of actually a recent legislation or, that was put out in the city of Tacoma, where they're looking at the equity empowerment lens, which is actually a part of a methodology to address racial equity. And so this was passed in October 2014, and to say that, that they will really look at and take into consideration equitable access to services for everyone in their community.
So, so one of the reasons we wanted to kind of flash up, and we did give you a little bit bigger version so you can have an easier time to read them perhaps, of, of those best practice, best practice examples, is really that there is an urgency, we can't just normalize racial inequity. It's absolutely critical that there's some more intentional action. So how do we go about achieving that? This slide really reflects kind of big buckets of what's in a strategic plan around that. And to your left, you see, there's really the collective leadership voice. And that's what we're here today to really focus in on and to have that conversation with you, because you are critical to that successful collective, you are, you are that collective leadership, right? And the other piece is the infrastructure, the tools that you need to make it happen, the data, all of the community engagement and accountability, all of those components, those are really implementation strategies. But you can't go forward with those components in a sustainable, impactful way without being grounded by that collective leadership. So we're really here focusing on, so what is a, what are the key components of achieving? What is that visible leadership about? So the, the couple bullets under there, just to get started, this is again, just to start, because this is really your collective leadership work. But we've used that term one Fairfax, how do we really achieve that? So frame one Fairfax, broader than human services, broader than education, it's bigger than that, it's for the community. We need to know, how are we doing in Fairfax in terms of equity? So what is our baseline now across the board, right? We might know it in some institutions, but we don't necessarily know it across the board. When, and if, and again, getting back to adopting that growth model that really is driven by equity. We know, again, that we are, you know, we have the opportunity to share best practices and to continue that learning and be a part of a national movement through that government alliance for race and equity, but just to be a part of that. And, and we've also been, we've been working with the Center for the Study of Social Policy, as many of you know, from back in the day of the institutional analysis, right? That really examined our front door of our juvenile justice system, that your school system had worked with us on, as well as the police. And the Center, CSSP, or the Center for the Study of Social Policy, they are looking to convene a regional dialogue around race equity. And so, again, kind of, this helps us to really, again, move beyond embracing diversity, move us beyond embracing diversity just as an asset. And so... And so I'm going to segue, but this one Fairfax and, and kind of the next steps, I'll, I'll get, get us started a little, but welcome either Pat or Janie or any of you to kind of feel free to pick up and contribute to some pieces here. But again, what it's, the time is now to move us beyond embracing diversity as an asset and implement a new growth model driven by equity, just in fair and including in, it should be inclusion, into, sorry, one Fairfax, a community in which everyone can participate and prosper. We believe really, and what we know from again, other jurisdictions, you know, all the right things in place, that without doing some things intentionally, you just don't get there. So it's only that intentional racial equity policy at its core for all publicly delivered services that you really sustain, you move the needle and you keep that needle down, you know, keep that needle where it needs to be. So race no longer is a predictor of outcomes. You have different outcomes, but they aren't predicted by race. There's other factors going on there and they're not just automatically predicted by race. So this kind of a policy would provide both the directions and the means to dismantle any and all structural arrangements that currently produce or maintain disparities and work together to build that vibrant and opportunity-rich society for all.
I could just throw in one example, which kind of helped me understand a little bit. When we were talking to John Powell from the University of California, he was saying that he was working with a jurisdiction that they wanted to, they noticed that a lot of youth would get a summons of some sort and they wouldn't show up for their appointment. And because they didn't show up for their appointment, the ultimate consequence they got was far worse than they would have gotten to begin with. So they were getting a consequence for not showing up as well as a consequence for whatever they had done initially. So in order to address that, they, they were trying to come up with a policy, with something that would work so that kids weren't be getting in trouble twice, basically. And so they decided to send out a reminder notice to say, you have to be in court. Don't forget, you have to show up for court on such and such a date. And they saw a great improvement in the number of kids who were showing up for court on time. When they then looked at the data, what they saw was that it had increased the disproportionate outcomes for minority youth because more white students showed up, more white kids showed up with the reminder. But it didn't increase the number of minority youth who were showing up. So even though their ultimate goal had been good, without going back and looking at it through the disaggregated lens, they didn't see which group they were. And then they said, well, they went back, they talked to the community, they had a conversation and said, well, you know, US Mail isn't necessarily reaching or, or isn't something people are reading. They get something from the court and they don't necessarily get the same attention to it. And so they went an electronic way and, you know, sent out a text or whatever to people. And then they got more kids in and they saw it through a more equitable lens. So some of it is looking at your data, we've been doing it for a long time, in a disaggregated way, when you have some policy or some outcome. So just to give a little bit, that helped me a lot understand from the standpoint of what kind of policies and what do you mean by looking through an equity lens, that ahead of time, you're looking through it and then you're looking at your outcomes and saying, did it have the outcome we intended? Or oops, wait, it's actually made it worse.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you, Mary Ann, and thanks to our friends from the county for that presentation. This is very exciting work that everyone's engaged in. I'm going to turn it over to Janie first and then Pat to give their insight, having been participants in this, and then we'll open up to the board.
Okay. And first, starting backward, one of, one of the areas that we continue to be very focused on is preschool. And that I know in Skip, we have talked about sort of our first really focused adventure on, on making sure that our opportunities are reaching all the children that we need to reach, that we really focus first on a rollout of a pilot program with preschool. So that's kind of the first piece on, on the plate. But as we've discussed this, what is interesting is on, on the school side, because we disaggregate everything we must, we have data that is very rich. Do we use it in the best sort of way? That clearly is a, is a conversation that we have to continue to have. On the county side, they've, they've not had the opportunity to disaggregate data. And so there's a lot of interest in knowing, whereas everybody has good intentions, but are the good intentions actually getting the kind of results? And Mary Ann's example was, is a perfect one, where, where people want to make sure that all kids, all citizens are having the opportunities that they need to be successful. But then until you are looking in, with intentionality and using data and all this other stuff, you don't always know if your, your policies are, are set in such a way to actually get the outcome where everybody's trying to get to. So this is an opportunity to look more finely, to make sure that we're going in the directions that as a community we want to go in. Again, in working with the Haas Institute, trying to understand the opportunities, I found as well, this page from King County, if you take a look at sort of their 14 determinants, it gives you a much larger context because it is, for example, on transportation, as the county's planning transportation networks, does it actually allow everyone to get to a job? Housing issues is sort of mixed income housing located, we've, we've talked with the Board of Supervisors about our own issues of, don't give us housing projects, please. This has an impact on our ability to provide quality schools. So as I say, the, this particular piece, I think, gives a larger context, I think, of where the entire county is, is looking. So it's sort of everyone being far more intentional and trying to establish a baseline so that we are assured that policies and practices are actually getting us to where we know we want to get to. And county has an opportunity. There's a lot of redevelopment going on. There are a lot of other projects that are going on. So it also gives them an opportunity and as our, as our own population continues to grow and becomes more diverse, resources tight, yes, but we keep looking at, how can we get better? We obviously talk about, do we have the right programs, the right places, the right staff, the best staff, all of those things. But again, as we look, both county and schools together, it helps us to stretch and make the best use of, of all of our staffs because they do work very well together. But as policymakers, we need to make sure that we're actually covering the ground in ways so that we get to the outcomes that we know that we're looking for. So.
Thank you, Janie. So off to Pat.
Thank you. Thank you all for this presentation. I mean, this is kind of tough stuff to talk about, right? Which maybe is why we don't really talk about it so intentionally and out loud as much as maybe we should. But you know, I mean, we have later today our Goal One, Student Achievement Goal Report, we're going to talk about that in a little while, and we had a preview of that. And once again, it showed us our achievement gaps and that they are along the lines that you're talking about. And it's persistent and we try a lot of things and they don't seem to be working. It's exactly the story that you're telling on our side. We had our HR report this morning and we talked about things like, do we have goals and measures that, that we're comfortable with when it comes to diversity in our workforce, when it comes to cultural competency training and that sort of thing. And we're still, you know, we're still in process on a lot of that stuff. So I, I think absolutely working with the county is huge, hugely helpful to us in this because it is a whole community issue. But you know, our, our own equity lens is not big enough or sharp enough, I think. And we're, I think we're working toward that. That's great. But just an example of where good intentions, we're not sure, you know, what happens with our good intentions. Couple of years ago, when we talked about adding honors classes as another layer in high school, so you had base and then you had AP, well, let's add an honors level. Well, some of the pushback that I got anyway from principals was, well, you're just going to end up, we're going to end up with the, the base school, the gen ed class being all the black and Hispanic kids, that that's, you know, that's what's going to happen. And so, you know, and what I said, well, I hope that's not what's going to happen. I hope that actually when we offer the honors level, we'll be encouraging kids who might not have wanted to take an AP class to push themselves and try the honors class. So actually, I voted for it because I thought, well, maybe this is a chance for us to do something about equity. But you know what? We haven't set any goals or measured the outcome of that. So we don't, you know, so I, I think, I do think that we have work to do here. There are a lot of things, early literacy, tracking, that this is kind of what I was talking about with honors, that has the effect of segregating. I think we need equity goals, measures and dashboards so we know what we're doing. So those, but we're not here today to talk about the implementation and the specific things. But I think it's true that we won't do these things if we don't commit to them at the board level. So I really appreciate all the work that you guys have done and that Skip is doing. And I think this is really, will be good for us.
Thank you, Pat and Janie. Now I'll open it up to the board if anyone else has any comments on this. Okay. Well, then we will move on to our next topic.
They're slow hands.
Okay. You guys got to, got to move. Okay. Tammy?
I, I'll defer to my colleagues. I just kind of want a, a closing statement to try to let you all know the conversations I had and where we plan to go on this.
Okay. Ted, you had your hand up?
I have a few minutes to discuss.
Okay. Sure. Okay.
I guess that's me then.
Yeah. Dr. Garza?
Yes. And again, thank, thank you. I think this, these are very difficult conversations that communities, I think, have to have. And so I appreciate the presentation today. I was curious about the pilot, the application of a race, racial equity policy in early childhood education. Can you tell me just, you know, very succinctly, kind of what, what the vision or idea, what that would look like?
So this is through the Skip team and they said, help us to understand what would be different in Fairfax County if we were intentional. We have lots of good things going on, so help us to see it. Help us to grab a hold of it and let's get some small successes. And our early childhood education system was one that also is a priority for Skip as, you know, the whole community. But, and they felt like, and there was a readiness on the part of the staff that support the early childhood education system to say, we'd be happy to work through an intentional racial equity lens and let's, we're not blowing up our system, but let's be intentional about it and let's see what that, see what happens as a result of that intentionality. So we're right now working with staff to, you know, to figure out how to, how to get them the support to work a little differently by applying a racial equity lens. What does that mean? And say, for example, they have an upcoming decision of, you know, whatever, you know, a, a grant funding or something. So that, how would you then implement that? So what would it look like from an implementation strategy? So that was kind of the pilot.
I'll, I'll be ready, more interested in hearing more about that later. And then just my final comment is this, and it's only my comment, this is not reflective of any board member. I think this is good work, but I worry that this is very heavy lifting and we have such a pressing need to solve the pre-cha, challenge we have right now, that I'm hoping that still remains at the top of this committee's list. We are only serving about 54% of our qualifying children. That's where the, the opportunity or achievement gap, whatever you want to call it, that's where it begins. And until we as a county solve that, we're going to be, it's going to be continued. And so I'm, I was very hopeful and I remain hopeful that the Skip Committee could come up with a strategy where we could solve that very important issue. So that's just my two, my two cents on that. And, and I know we've got good people around the Skip Committee working on that. But I, I think at least my, this person's view is that that needs to be a priority.
And, and the, part of the reason I think that they chose to put the focus on this particular thing was because the work of the county and the school system committee that has been working on that has been so strong. And when we say a lens, other jurisdictions have a tool that they've actually developed or a few tools that they've developed, that it's just like a series of questions you ask as you're making decisions going forward. So it shouldn't slow down the work that is going on. It may be more a matter of when you're saying, where are you going to open the next program or what are you going to do, that you answer this series of questions so that you're going into it with information in your head that you may not have intentionally considered before.
Okay. Ted?
Thank you for giving me some more time to think, Mr. McLeveen. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Garza.
Of course, that's not the model we want to follow.
And, and by, and by the way, I, I do agree with Dr. Garza that, I mean, if there's any near-term goal that we should be working on, it's, it's finding an integrated solution to the pre-kindergarten issue. There are lots of things to take on, but I think, I think we all agree, that's, that's where the, that's where our focus needs to be. I have a variety of comments. In passing, there was some discussion about the history of women's rights. And I just want to say that, you know, the clock is still running. We still don't have an ERA amendment passed, which needs to be passed by the end of this decade. Public service announcement there. So, okay, so now getting into some of the tricky stuff here. How do we distinguish between socioeconomic and race? So there's discussion of this. And I, I mean, I'd be happy to have you send us some materials to read about this, both nationally and of course, at the county level.
Want me to reply to that now?
If you can give me a brief, just.
Definitely. I think that, I think one of the things in, in doing this work, what you see is definitely a lot of the indicators, variables, especially around socioeconomic as well as race, they overlap and they mask one another. I think one of the things that, that in looking at this and what we, what we see is that even when you, even when you look into an issue or look into an area or like I said, disaggregated data, what you still see is that whatever the issue is, if the variables remain the same, so let's say myself at a higher, same education level as Karen, what you still see is that people of color, their performance or outcomes will be at least desired, even when identical variables are present. And so the question then becomes, so when you, when all, when all things are still equal, why is that? And then that's when we have to take a step back and say, okay, you know, what questions do we ask ourselves to kind of say, okay, if everything is still equal, why is outcomes still the same? Whether they're birth, birth, birth rates or low birth rate for women PhDs in comparison to white women with PhDs and women of color PhDs, you look at the birth rates. And so, so without going deeper, we will definitely send you some of that stuff. But the question then becomes, when everything is still equal, the outcomes for people of color still are below.
Yeah, I definitely would be interested in, in supporting information. I will say as a white person, one of the best examples, ways of appreciating this issue was, there was a video of Neil deGrasse Tyson talking about his experience growing up as a, as an African-American. And if you haven't seen it, you'll, you'll have to look it up because it was eye-opening to me.
Can I, I'm going to add one more thought that I think may help your conversation or help your thinking on race and poverty that hit home, hit, made your home run in my mind as far as an aha moment. We a lot of times look at income, right? And so when you think about poverty, you think about income. But it's really absolutely critical to think about wealth. And what is that generational wealth? And if I sat here and told you today that for every dollar, this is across the country, not in Fairfax County, but I don't know what the Fairfax County numbers are, I'd be curious to know. For every dollar that a white family has the opportunity to pass down in wealth, what do you think it is for an African-American family or a Latino family? And it may surprise you that it's actually in the single digits. Six cents on a dollar for African-American family, seven cents on a dollar for a Latino family. And when you think about structural inequities, you have, you know, there's something that has to be done, you know, that's, that's what's happening today.
You're getting into some of the, the really big macro, macroeconomic issues and I'll try to allude to that a little bit later. I was pleased to see there was mention of SIMSAC, the Chantilly Pyramid. And, you know, that, that group, we just celebrated our 30, 30 years, right? And one of the things that puzzles and disappoints me is, why haven't we been able to foster replicas, similar organizations throughout the county? I mean, there are extraordinary people that are still active and that accounts for a lot of it. But what's different about what has gone on in Chantilly? Is it, is it really just the people? Or are there things that could be done elsewhere? And to see that we've got all this other stuff and there's nothing really comparable, I feel like we should be doing more here. Because what, what that committee does is they do tutoring, they do all kinds of supports, there's a recognition. There's a recognition that not every kid grows up in the same kind of environment with the same privileges and background. And they're trying to help make it open for kids to get more support outside of home and outside of school. So I keep wishing that there's some way to mirror that elsewhere. I'll get to a more, this is going to get to be a difficult issue, but we're here to talk about those things. So, you know, of course, we have a legacy of racial discrimination. And, you know, it amazes me to think as a kid of the things that I saw on television to realize that was happening here in the country. And it was happening here in Fairfax County. I grew up in Ohio, but I really don't get a free pass. There's what I used to call northern racism. And I think many of us from Columbus were equally guilty of that. But something that, you know, we talk about the achievement gap, for instance. And we say, well, it's white and Asian and black and Hispanic. And, you know, I think we're skipping over something, right? There's something culturally going on by which Asian families are able to be lumped with white families and Hispanic families are being lumped with black families. And I don't think we're talking about what that might be. I mean, I don't think, I mean, I think that there was, I think there was discrimination against Asians, right? I don't know. I've always felt that that's a discussion that we don't have. What's going on in the communities, in the cultures? Do you need me to quiet down? Okay. I'd like to have a go back, Mr. McElveen.
Okay. We have Ms. Schultz, followed by Mr. Velkoff. We have 10 minutes left, so.
Having UC Berkeley confide or assist on this is like having Media Matters issue a report about mainstream media. So the validity of a lot of what's being said here is, to me, has the carpet pulled out underneath it? Because we don't have any institutes of higher learning in Virginia or Washington DC or in the tri-state area. So why Fairfax County had to go to UC Berkeley in order to help with this is beyond me. And when I go back to the core issue of why I thought there was a county-wide effort looking at some of these issues, it was to address pre-K. So how we went on this detour to here, I don't understand that. So I'll put that out there as a start. The example that she provided about a child who gets in trouble in the community, not showing up at court, did not demonstrate an inequitable situation in any regard. They shouldn't have gotten in trouble in the first place. And if they did, they should have shown up at court. The problem is a lack of respect for authority. And my colleague, Mr. Velkoff, you know, highlights some leaders. And I'm going to highlight a Milwaukee sheriff who says that it comes down to respect for authority and it begins at home. So maybe in a slightly more diplomatic way, Dr. Garza was saying that there are some issues that happen outside the transom of the school that we're never going to get to. Now, I think the board made a very brave and legitimate step last week in hosting a faith community outreach to begin conversations about how to address the greater depth and breadth of issues that are out there and how they get addressed. Because a school system cannot be the panacea for all of the ills in society. Not family ills, not societal ills, not economic ills, not job opportunity ills, none of the above. It cannot fall to FCPS or any other school system in the United States to solve all that isn't equitable within the existence of a child or a family. And so I'm not sure what the actual intent or outcome of this is, or how much this is costing. But I don't see it addressing a very fundamental issue, which is if you get kids prepared early, they have a greater chance of success, period. That's it. You can massage, whether you call it an achievement gap or an opportunity gap, if it makes people feel better, any which way you like. But the bottom line is, you take money, get four-year-olds into pre-K first and spend money earlier, and it starts to go like this later. And that's what I wished had been presented or been talked about or worked on by a community of somebody out there. And I know that's, you want to talk about a brave conversation, that's a brave conversation to have. But presenting me information from UC Berkeley and saying, we need racial equity when we have Title I schools that get federal monies, we have a staffing reserve that buys down the cost of school class sizes in certain areas, we have young scholars, we have all these opportunities that we create. But it's more than, happens within the walls and the roof of a school that lead to these gaps. And when we want to have those brave conversations, then we'll start getting to, you know, what marriage rates are, what focus on education is by culture or by community. We'll get to the value of honoring and respecting authority. And no one has been more concerned about the disparity in the discipline practices and the pipeline to prison than just a small handful of us on this board. And I have railed about that nonstop. But that's a later in life practice, that is a policy in practice of FCPS that does create and is tangible in creating different outcomes. But I am very worried that this board needs the focus and the attention on very focused, very specific things like getting early intervention for kids and getting them up to speed on learning to read and a facility with numbers and numeracy for success. And this goes someplace else that I think is not productive. And in the end, it does not give us a tangible thing to focus on, to hold on to, to make a difference for kids in our community.
Okay. We have Ms. Hines and then Mr. Velkoff, but we really do need to move on.
Okay. I'll be quick. I just, I think you hear our politics coming out here. And I think that's okay. I mean, that's what this conversation does. It brings out everybody's, you know, personal feelings. I think, I understand, it's more comfortable to talk about pre-K, it's more comfortable to talk about poverty than it is to talk about race. And mostly when we talk about pre-K, we're talking about poverty. We're not talking about race. So that's a different conversation. It's one we absolutely have to have, but it's different. I think the whole question of whether we have people in our community who are of color but not poor, it's very clear that we do. And I was at the FCCPTA Emerging Minority Leadership Conference a couple of weeks ago. Mr. Darnett Kofax was there and Mr. Stork. And had the opportunity during that morning to talk to a lot of parents there who were African American and Hispanic parents who are of means, they're middle-class or upper-middle-class, and they still feel like the system works against them. And that's a reality, you know? Or that they don't have, their kids don't have the same opportunities that other kids do. And we have to listen to that. And I think when we look at our, when we disaggregate our own numbers, we see the same thing. So this is a conversation that we have to have. And I'll just close quickly with, you know, the Reston example. I brag about Reston all the time, right? With its 50-year commitment to diversity, it is a very successful community now, both in our schools and in our local economics. I mean, the level of public and private investment in that community is awesome. If the county could follow Reston's example, I think we'd all be in very good shape, better shape than we are. And for 50 long years, that has been a major part of the vision of Reston is integration and diversity and making sure that everybody has opportunity. So I see this as so essential to what we do. And pre-K is part of it. But this undergirds everything that we do.
Thanks, Pat. Ted?
So I wanted to give a couple of thoughts about One Fairfax. First of all, it's a great slogan. And I do hope we can unite under that banner, but I'm not ready to buy in. Currently, I see no vision in this county. Where's the portrait of a citizen? You know, on the school side, we're starting to think like this, right? We're saying, what's the portrait of a graduate? What's the outcome? I don't see us doing this as a county. Where's the vision of what Fairfax County looks like in 2050? Where's the action plan for getting there? We do need a One Fairfax, but we're missing the vision. And to wrap up, one of the best articles I ever read was within months of coming on the board. And it was by Posi Solberg, who became famous, of course, for Finnish lessons. An article that I saw, that was headlined, "What We Can't Learn From Finland." And the points that he made, and I'm, this is off the top of my head, but what he talked about was basically in Finland, you've got prenatal care, you've got childcare, universal childcare, universal healthcare, higher standards for teachers, higher pay for teachers, all kinds of stuff, and higher taxes. That's not the US. It's not Fairfax County. Now, I think to get to what, my vision of what I would like us to be in 2050, I think means becoming more like Finland. But how are we going to get there? How are we as a community? We have to change the government structures in Virginia and this county to have the ability, even if we adopt that vision, right? Currently, we couldn't even get there unless government changes. So I think that's the real challenge. And I hope, if nothing else, we, I'm glad that we're having this conversation. I think it's extremely important. And I think the idea of One Fairfax is something we need to get behind, but we need to have a, we need to define what that vision is. And it's not there yet.
Thank you, Mr. Velkoff. Ms. Evans and then Ms. Darnett Kofax will close off.
Thank you. And I will be brief. I just wanted to weigh in to say, I do appreciate you putting these issues into the context that you have. And I appreciate the work that has gone into it. And this is a, this is a start. I am going to agree with my colleagues in the sense that I also believe we do need to then go to more concrete. We need to go to the concrete actions that stem from this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. And Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Thank you. I want to thank you all for coming today. I appreciate your time. I appreciate your hard work on this. I think when Ms. Hines and I first met with Sharon Boliva, we talked about the need for a broader pre-K program across the county. That was our initial conversation when we first got on the board. And then from that, the Skip, the Skip committee came to be. Where you're going, I think, is brave. It's a conversation that needs to happen. Is it going to be comfortable? No, it's not. It's going to be difficult. I think we see that reflected in our community today, given our broad community, meaning our country today. I think we see difficult issues being confronted. And when we have difficult issues, it's going to take thought, it's going to take the ability to listen to each other and be respectful with each other. And that's going to take time. But I do believe as a board, when we are moving forward, and we are the elected leaders at this point in time, I think it's important to look at the next action steps. So the one thing that I did do is I did reach out to Sharon Boliva. And we talked about what could we do next? We hadn't heard this presentation. I understand that you had presented it to the county a few months ago, or in October, I believe, October. And so at this point, what we would like to do is we would like to convene, say, a mini-work session. I didn't clarify with Sharon exactly what her thoughts were on that, but I'm thinking like a half-day session where we bring the boards together. Or we talk about, where we begin the conversation. And we're thinking in the early part of the next year, to be able to do that, to talk about it, to talk about it in terms of all of the things which we touched upon today. But we also talked about the need to look to the community. And I think we would like to work with staff as the leaders. And, you know, for the board members here, I would like to invite you to, once we're kind of looking, looking at a moderated discussion, meaning what are best practices out there in areas? I know you gave us some examples, but are these, are obviously not the only ones. But where and how can we move forward? Can we listen to some experts in the field and move forward and have them come to us and talk to us about what they see and where they're going? So that's our intent for the next step. And as board members, if, you know, you're seeing things that you're interested in or you've seen areas where best practices are observed, I encourage you to share them with me as well as staff. And we can begin that. And I will follow up. But the idea is to definitely convene another work session in the early part of next year and move forward from there.
Thank you, Ms. Darnett Kofax. So thank you again to our friends from the county, Mary Ann, Kim, everyone for coming out for this. We're going to take a two-minute break and then we're going to launch into our instructional presentation.